It is 5:30 on September the 21st. This is Robert Stevenson. We're going to call to order the Southwick County Grand County Regional School Committee regular meeting tonight. The opening ceremony to stand and do the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance in flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to remember Mr. Atkinson, who passed away this week as a long teacher and track coach here at the school. Thank you. All right, so secretary report. We've got the minutes here from our last meeting except for the seventh. May I get a motion to accept the minutes? Any questions or comments on the minutes? None, I'll take a roll call vote to accept the minutes for the meeting on the seventh. Pam?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob say yes, motion passes 5:00. Matt's looking. Okay, warrants. Saw the basket, we're working on those. Superintendent Willard, do we have any correspondence this week?
We do, Chairman. I have two letters. One of them was from the Special Olympics of Massachusetts. It was sent to Principal Tramell, and it says, "Congratulations. On behalf of Special Olympics Massachusetts, we are honored to declare Southwick Regional School an official 2021 Special Olympics Massachusetts Unified Champion School. Under your leadership, the staff and students have demonstrated their commitment to meaningful initiatives for unified sports, inclusive leadership and full school engagement." And it just goes on to say, "Despite the unnecessary challenges and uncertainty that marked this past year, your school community has shown its determination to social connectedness and the importance of including all students, providing opportunities and activities in person, virtually, or a combination of both. You are all truly creating a unified generation of young people who embrace differences and lead social change." So we are pleased to share that with the community from the Special Olympics. And we also received our update from NIAF. This is the, every 10 years they come and they do a report at our high school. Last year, Principal Tramell addressed a few issues during his special progress report, and they gave him some commendations. The Commission of Public Schools at its June 28, 2021 meeting reviewed the special progress report of Southwick Regional Schools and continued the school's accreditation. The committee was pleased to commend the following. The implementation of flexible scheduling that allows for sharing the staff across schools in a way that ensures equity in teaching and preparation time to adapt to changing enrollment. The analysis of enrollment projections for planning purposes, and the annual building inspections to identify areas of concern and guide resource allocation. The commission requested an additional special progress report due May 1st, 2022, that details actions taken to develop and implement a plan that addresses inconsistencies in grading practices among teachers. So that is something that Principal Tramell is working on this year, and he will be sending in his special progress report at the end of this school year. And that is what I had.
Okay. Fantastic, thank you very much. That takes us to our first public comment. Here that would wish to address the committee. They have three minutes to do that. Anybody here tonight want to address the committee for some comment?
So my name is Mike Gory, I'm Chair of Time. I just came to sort of talk about that masterclass committee and answer any questions or whatever you ask. I know you have it on the agenda for later today. We have a meeting at seven o'clock. I just don't know how to gauge your meetings and how long it'll take, but I'm happy if you don't think it's going to take that long to get to that agenda item, I'm happy to wait until then. But otherwise, I'm happy to talk about it now, answer questions or offer information about it now.
You should have no problem getting to your meeting at seven o'clock.
And I will wait until that. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? All right. We will go to student advisory report.
I have a big report tonight. Now that school's back and things are finally up and running, everyone's busy now. So as some of you know, I was out last week with a concussion, so I wasn't really in school, but I do know a lot about what happened last week. At last meeting, we had the parking spots hating them for the seniors not that approved. We had a class meeting yesterday that talked about it. I actually brought a copy of what students are getting tonight. If anybody wants to take a look at it, we got this at the assembly. We mentioned it being in the morning earlier, it was like a breakfast thing, but there's actually an SAT that day, so we push it back from four to four. People are notified. I think it's going to be really fun and a great experience for all the seniors. Last week, students were given access to the online learning guide wallpaper. This is what every student received in class. This is the flyer that went along with an instructional video. I personally haven't watched it yet, but I will, I promise. It's an online tutoring platform to support the learning in the classrooms. Every student got an email from Mr. Tramell explaining how to log in and all the links. Basically, it's just an extra help form that is a resource that the students can use. Tonight, there's actually a Southwick job fair. It's ending at 7:30 at the town hall. Students were notified about that, they want to go if anybody else wants to stop by. That's happening right now. There's some representatives coming from colleges for seniors. That happens every year, most of them are virtual this year, but an in-person rep came on Friday from Merrimack is actually Ms. Shorter's daughter. I talked to her, she was really nice. It's great just going forward. Later in the packets, I see they added it today. I'm assuming the senior visor, the shirts that happens every year, that's exciting. SRS is offering an eight-session group support group for students who have experienced death of a parent, close family member, or friend. It's a group that provides safe space and students can find good guidance, I believe. There's a college fair at Western New England on October 5th. High school class elections happened yesterday. Every class had a meeting and gave speeches, a normal election process. It's nice, all of the class officers for the seniors that helped plan the parking that were elected, which was always nice. There's always some random people that just try to run against for the fun of it, but it's always a good time in the auditorium with everyone. Student council elections will be held early next week. National Honesty Day last Wednesday before school, and we like kind of just have what's it going to look like this year? Hopefully, the students will get a nice fall induction. I know last year that was one of the things that got pushed back to the spring, but we were able to do it in the courtyard, which was really nice. In Horizon, we'll meet next month. I actually had the opportunity today to go and eat lunch with the students in Miss Bean's room. That's, many of the students in there are on the Unified Sports team, which I was a part of last year, reading that little letter just made me so happy. They all, they all love playing, and again, unified basketball's happening. That goes till, I believe, Thanksgiving, which is exciting. It's just so much fun working with them. Girls Who Code met today after school. GSA met last week and are meeting tomorrow. Connections by Ms. Luthender, Ms. Anderson, and Mr. Caspi Kelly is starting. There's a field trip, I think, happening or a virtual conference that some are attending, but I can get more information on that under the center. But that concludes tonight's report. I'm wondering if you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, educational presentation. We have a presentation tonight from Mrs. Lamro for test and stay.
You ready?
We're ready.
Okay. I'm not ready. So test and stay is only for students that are exposed at school. It's not somebody exposed out in the community. You have to be exposed at school, teacher, it's for staff and students. So if you decide that you are close contact, you come to school and we take your nasal swab and test it right then and there. If you are negative, you get to stay in school. If you're positive, you have to go home. And then you have to have PCR testing because antigen is not an accepted form, but yet we're using it because PCR is the gold standard. So guys, just have to do a testing, how the test is run. We did send out consent forms, and at this point, for all the schools, there's 196 students that have signed up for yes consents, 34 staff, and one of that is a no. But other than that, that's, I think we need to work on that a little bit. And also, if it becomes like if your child has been the positive contact, they can sign up right then and there. They can go online, fill it out, and we can get the ball. So that's in the beginning, the CIC Help is the company that is providing the support systems and the testing. But because we're only doing test and stay, they would send someone out to get us like first couple of tests done, but then after that, there's not going to have in-person support. So in-person support's only for like the first time we're going to do it. But I really don't think we'll need them. The hardest part that we're finding right now is trying to figure out there's two different systems, so you have to learn the program for the DPH and then the program for recording of it, the testing aspect. So it's it's a pretty big learning curve. And the person that they have given us as our support was being trained today. So she couldn't answer any of my questions. But they're saying that this can be done by any support team, school nurse, EMT, or other medical professional. The CIC was going to send out a nurse today, so I guess that's a good thing. So what happens is five days of consecutive testing. So if it's a Wednesday, you got the weekend in the middle. If you are not doing any school-related activity on the weekend, you are home and quarantined. If you have something that happens on the weekend, I give you a take-home test. There's an app, there's instructions so that if you are, continue to be negative as a student, you bring your results to your coach, you bring your results to the drama person, you have the bandleader, whoever's doing something on that weekend, so you can participate. Because while you're negative, you come in with your results and you can participate. So if you don't have anything over the weekend and your five days come and go, you still get tested on Monday. So regardless of where you fall, if it's day five is on Saturday, Monday, we're going to make sure that you're still negative. Let's see, what else do you want to know about? So it's seven days from the date of exposure, which kind of sounds odd when you say five, but it's because we went to the school five days a week, and two days on the week, so. So they have each test takes a minimal amount to do swabs on both sides, but 15 minutes to run the test so that we can't do it in the nurse's office. Because unfortunately, if that student is positive, then you contaminated your nurse's office. And 15 minutes is the time limit that they're giving us for exposure purposes. So each school's going to have a different space to do it in. And I don't see why it wouldn't work. And I think the hardest part is going to be the learning of the documentation, you know. Amy, did you give the letter out?
Yes.
Okay. So it does explain it quite well, but I'm sure we'll still have to reiterate how things will go. The others we do not have a large population that I'm asking. Forty-six point six percent of our students.
About 360 students.
Yeah, I think it was 318, but yeah. There are a lot of little quirky things versus vaccinated and unvaccinated, but we're learning as we go. Why do they don't keep changing the rules?
So I have a question on this flow chart here that we were given. So you know, at the top, we have close contact with COVID infection and are you asymptomatic? Okay, so then we go from there to are you exempt from testing and quarantine? Now, if I'm reading this correctly, it means that you would answer yes, you are exempt from testing and quarantining if any or all of those bulleted criteria are met.
Okay, so bulleted criteria, it's
So I'm not quite sure what makes you Are they like all of them or are there just one? Right, like what makes you exempt from testing and quarantine?
If you are vaccinated.
Yeah. So, so okay, then follow-up question. If you're asymptomatic and vaccinated, does that mean that test and stay doesn't even apply to you? Okay, that was my question. Okay, now what if, what about classroom close contact? Let's say that you're not vaccinated, but you are a classroom close contact, but you have been at least three feet apart and masked. Does that mean you're also not eligible for test and stay?
No, because they're still going by the six feet.
Yeah. So you will have to
Yeah, but that's not about this stage.
No, 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 no. Nope. If you're, this DESI is using three feet. The definition for a close contact is six feet. That has not changed. But the definition for who needs the testing quarantine is if you're, if you're at that, if you're less than three feet, you don't have to. Like if you're greater than six, if you're greater than three feet, you do not need to test and quarantine.
Both people are wearing masks.
Right.
If you're greater than three feet apart
That is correct.
Then they are exempt from having to do the test and stay.
Yes, okay, okay.
So that means if they're less than three feet apart, or if one of the people were unmasked, then they would be, then they would be considered, they would be considered a close contact and would need to go see the nurse to get the swab.
Got it, okay, thank you for clarifying. And that, that right there is the big thing. That's why I was on the DESI webinar, because people are confused with that. People kept asking me, they said, "Well, the definition of close contact." And they said, "Yes, definition of a close contact is within six feet, but the criteria for testing is three feet." So that's the difference. Close contact, we could still call you and say, "Hi, your child's a close contact" because they were in six feet. However, they're exempt, or we don't even require them to do any, but. So my next question is the numbers that you gave us with regard to the number of people that have said yes, permission for test and stay. What percentage of our school population do those numbers represent? Okay, so follow-up question to that is how do we increase those numbers?
Well, like I said, if you ended up with, you know, Susie can come to school if she does test and stay, I'll just introduce consent. Are you, as the parent, going to say, "Nah, she can stay home"? You're going to say, "Okay, I'm going to write my consent."
So you basically, what you're saying is you will accept rolling consent.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes.
They can do it immediately on the spot, right? If they go online?
Yep, yeah.
It's uploaded. And who is responsible for contact tracing when it comes to in the district? Who's doing that?
Each nurse in their own building has been taking care of that.
Okay.
We have a spreadsheet. We talk amongst ourselves because we have so many siblings.
Right.
And usually, one phone call to a parent is much easier than three.
Correct.
So
Right, so it's nice to be this kind of like collaboration.
Oh, absolutely.
And when you refer to the learning curve, I'm assuming that you refer primarily to the, what's necessary for the reporting out of what you do and basically paperwork.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, that's not my question.
But the problem being is with the start of school, there's so much work that the nurse's office gets with all the paperwork that comes in, the physicals, the emergency parts, you name it. Get that timeframe to, instead of 10 hours. An hour is a lot of training time. I'm doing the best that I can, and I, our float nurse that is the COVID money nurse, she's going to be doing it with me. So the two of us are trying to get on board. That's why we picked October 4th as our start date, just to give us enough time to be able to have a little comfort. We have one nurse who is present and will be going out in February, so things might shake up a little bit, but we'll see how it goes. Any other questions? You're welcome.
And just, I believe we have these, there's flow chart, there's protocol A, protocol B, protocol C. They're on our website. The document is very wordy, the flow chart is super, super helpful. We actually used it in our office just the other day when we were deciding to show people the close contact or not. So I would recommend, if you're confused, just go to that.
Only if you're confused about the flow chart.
You're right. Or
All right, Superintendent Willard.
So thank you. So this is actually a communication survey results. But I need to, but giving Amy McLaughlin the credit for it. She's the one who really took this one and ran with it and disseminated the data and put this together because communications a lot comes, she does most of the communication. And so it's really important to her to make sure that we're doing the best we can and that we're reaching everybody that we need to reach. This started, this communication survey, as a result of our self-assessment that we did at the end of the school year last year. We were looking at some of the feedback we received, and we wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could do and to see how our communication was and what we needed to do to improve it. So we looked at it, and historically, we have sent out like paper memos and they would come home in a kid's backpack. And then we started doing a little bit of the Blackboard Connect, but there wasn't really any verbal communication that we were sending out to families. And so today, most, what we're doing is we received parent input at one of my meetings where they said, "We really prefer text messages. If you could do text messages, that would be great." And so Amy and I worked on it, and we incorporated text messaging. And people didn't like the phone calls, they wanted emails. So we still do send phone calls because there are some people who do prefer it, but we tried to replace a lot of the antiquated practices with paper and doing it more by email and through text messaging and using our social media as getting our story out there so that people can be aware of it, because a lot of people do use social media for their information. And the other thing we worked on a few years ago was updating our website. Our website was antiquated, it wasn't relevant, it wasn't easy to use. So we did a pilot program over the course of the year. So we still have some work with that we do, we know we need to do on our website. There were some issues as our tech team designed and set up our website that we're still trying to work through some of those problems. But we are trying to make it as user-friendly as possible, and by using icons, because now people are much more used to using icons to click on things than they are words. So the goal was, as we did the survey, was we were being, trying to get information out fast, fast, and faster last year. And we were getting the information in trickles, and people were looking for answers five days ago when we didn't have it. And so what we tried to do was kind of, we worked as fast as we could, but we were kind of developing things as we went, because we really didn't have any proactive way to put feedback out there. So one of the things we did was we really wanted to see what our stakeholders' feedback was on our transparency, because that was a big one in COVID. A lot of school districts felt like things are being hidden from them. They didn't know what was really going on with COVID in their district. We tried to be as transparent as possible. And were they getting the information as timely as we possibly could? Now, timeliness on our end and timeliness on a parent's end, because I'm a parent, I understand, sometimes are two different things. I think as members of the school committee last year, we were waiting for information and waiting for information, and then we finally got it, and we would put it out as fast as we could. But our, but our, I think our words last year, you'll get it early next week or later in the week. It was like we were always waiting for it. So we decided to build a survey that we could figure out was where our parents were looking for it, what they were accessing, was it timely and was it transparent? And in the end, we had 279 people who responded to it, and 228 were parent guardians and 51 were staff. And there's the breakdown of the schools that participated. The results were, where do people look for it? Well, as we know, most people look for it from district-wide notifications. What I found interesting was that 52% look for information from email from a teacher. That was information for me, because I didn't know there was that much communication going on between our teachers, and that's where a lot of parents were relying on information. So that was some interesting. I would have thought that social media would have been higher as, I would have, I would have thought our district website would have been higher. So those were interesting wheres and aha moments for us and why we're trying to rebrand the district website as really like the hub of the district and a source, or a place for people to go and not just have it be like, "I'm going there to look for the school lunch calendar" or the, what the school calendar is. Those are mostly the only reasons people are accessing our district website, which I find fascinating because I just didn't. So results, access. Am I able to understand the communication that I received from STGRSD? There was pretty overwhelmingly that people were able to understand what we sent out, which is huge, because communication, you want people to understand what it is you're sending out. So that was positive. We looked at accessing the website. Again, only 76% access the website occasionally. That's more than one, but less than 25 times per year. What were the reasons? Calendar, lunches, newsletter, bulletins. And 75%, so they can find what they need some of the time. And I got to say, I like that too. Sometimes I go to Amy and I'm like, "Amy, where's this on our website?" So I understand, I, it's our website, and I still sometimes know that we can make hyperlinks and make access easier and so you don't have to keep clicking down five menus to get to the one thing that you're looking for. I consider communication I receive from STGRSD to be timely. Again, very overwhelming that people agree to, somewhat agree to strongly agree. So again, I know last year, everybody wanted answers before we had them, but we really did try to get it out as best we could. Where are communications transparent? Again, overwhelmingly, somewhat agree, agree, and strongly agree. So how would you rate quantity and quality of communication provided by Southwick County and Randall Regional School District? And again, I have to tell you, one of the things that we are And again, I have to tell you, one of the things um, that we are taught as uh, superintendents is not to um, use your Blackboard Connect or your district-wide communications too frequently. Because if you use them too frequently, then people stop listening to them. They think, oh, I've already heard this or this is something. But if you use it to put out relevant, um, important information, people will listen to the phone call, but if they feel like it's something that, oh, they're just calling to give us another COVID update, or they're just calling to tell us somebody in the school district has it, they stop listening. So we really do walk that fine line between communication and when to use the phone calls and when not to. So we found email was actually a better one because people can kind of access email at their own time. It's not one that's gonna be on their voicemail. Um, so that was definitely something we took away from that.
But we found that um, when we send out text messages, it's usually text messages that say check your email, right?
Right, we have a certain limited number of um,
Characters.
Characters that we're allowed to use.
We can't send it in multi.
We got one today that said there was a traffic accident.
Right, so some to the point.
If it's a short enough message, you can do it.
Right.
Yeah, just that I think that works the best. As Shota, the thing that's like instant, everyone's got their phone there. Um, so as much as we can even stop them from going with their email. I don't, I don't wanna say they don't wanna send it to their email, I'm just saying that when you can get those messages out immediately like that.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree. But I, you know, I think it's, it's a huge step in the right direction because a lot of times, you know, people aren't checking their email or things get buried. So if you're getting a text and you know the topic of the email, you know your interest level and whether or not, oh, I better go check my email. And I think.
I can wait for that.
Right, exactly. And I think that's a.
Yeah, well, I mean, our phones are the most direct. Those texts couldn't be any more problematic.
Couldn't agree with you more. It's, it is a little like, but out of snow day, I'll text it. I'll be like, delayed day, snow day, because I know that's what right next to everyone's saying. Yeah, um, but it, we are limited to the number of characters, so if we can get it out in a text, we will. But sometimes we just have to say like, for example, important information on Superintendent Willard and testing today, check your email.
Right.
Um, we try to be a little bit more um, specific in the text message if it's, you know, oh, it's about COVID update or if it's about whatever. But um, it is tricky and I do agree with you about texting. Um, coordinate messages from the superintendent and the principals to ensure they're on the same page. That was a staff member. Again, last year, we were getting information in and getting it out and sometimes we were giving it out to families before our staff even knew about it. There's not much I can say about last year. We were trying to get information out and sometimes parents in the news had it before we even had it as superintendents and so that was from a staff member. Um, and email communication should be more frequent from individual schools. Um, that was a parent suggestion, so we did work with our um, schools this year to make sure that they were sending out their information in their emails on the same day. And one thing that Amy's really working on and she's kind of taken it is a district communications plan. Um, it's gonna, it's a plan that sets a strategy and guides us in our communication to our stakeholders. Some of the uh, things that we're trying to do is to kind of tell our story on social media um, by celebrating our students and staff and really letting, we couldn't really, we can't really have like tons of parents in our schools. We're trying to bring our school out to our parents and to really let them know what's going on during the school day and let them see like those snippets. Our principals are doing a great job at Powdermill and Woodland on uh, in their smores, including lots of pictures on what's happening for parents to see. Um, and we're trying to identify reasonable parameters for communications at the district, school and teacher level. Um, again, you don't wanna over-communicate, you can't under-communicate either.
Are our uh, the text messages that you do, are they, can they be specific to a school? I don't know.
Yes, yes, yes.
Just curious.
So we all have actual, access to Blackboard Connect and that's kind of our district uh, communication output system. And we can text phone, like if Amy sends something out and I don't record it in my voice, she doesn't record it in her voice, she'll do like a robot voice. Or you can call in, yeah, or and I think Mr. Presnell does the robot voice too. I, yeah. And I, I will do it personally. I, I'll, I'll call in, but there's a comfort level with that as well. Um, and that you could put in a place for email and then you can put in a place for uh, text messaging. It's so um, specific that you can actually get down and you could say just this bus number or just this grade or, so you can really get into Blackboard and connect who it is that you're sending it to. Um, so we, we do have it, um, but again, it's only as good as the information that's included.
Yeah, it's great because that doesn't allow the devaluing of if you're constantly got kids to high school and you're getting powder mill things, you're just like boring stuff.
Right, exactly.
Could you make it an option to include students in it? I feel like most of the time, like, our generation's social media, most of the time, like, I get, I check my email a million times a day because everything's a lot of computer-based and it's especially from last year.
You're forgetting me.
But most of the time, my mom will ask me, be like, oh, what's that about? I'm like, I don't know, you didn't, like, I didn't know about it because you got an email from it. And she's like, oh, there's a snow day. I'm like, oh, I didn't know that. I feel more times when you get to the certain age, I mean, everybody has their school email.
Right.
You get to a certain point and I mean, I think it's good for students to even like transfer that and it takes on a certain level of responsibility.
Yeah.
Do we still get the five-thirty phone calls when school's canceled? Or are we gonna get texts now?
No, you're still gonna get the phone call, but you can get texts as well.
You're gonna say I get both.
Trust me, do you know how I have to work on that voice at four o'clock in the morning when I'm trying to record that? That's a skill. That is a skill to not make it sound like it's four o'clock in the morning.
You could speak Russian at five-thirty in the morning. I just know when the phone rings that early, oh, school's canceled. See, I almost had to say anything.
And just like you know.
From the high school, okay.
We have to make the, so other school districts, because of their size, they don't have, they're, they're waking up at five to make their decisions. We get up at four o'clock in the morning with our DPH because we have to make decisions by, it was like four-thirty-ish, like four forty-five at the latest because of Tallinn and Granville. So our decisions are made at four forty-five and that sometimes makes it iffy too in a decision because you know whether it might be coming, it's not coming. You need, other school districts may have an hour. It, there's all these little intricacies of uh, our, our district and Route fifty-seven going up to Tallinn and West Granville, so.
I'll take a lot of snow days this year.
Oh, you're a thief. I can't see yourself last year, so just so you know.
No, that one's not.
Yeah, but so those are some things we're working on and again, we're trying to work on our website. One of our goals of pre-COVID was to have an app that you could have on your phone that interfaces with the website because it doesn't, it doesn't sync as well.
It's not a use phone user.
It is not at all. We're aware of that. It is not on the game plan for this year because we're still in COVID mode and we're working on our communications plan still, but we are aware of it. And it is something that we are going to be taking on and looking at getting a uh, phone app that works with our website.
I tell it on my phone to go to desktop mode and I do it desktop mode on my phone because so much of it is not available in the phone mode.
Right on. That's what I have to mention. So, impressive. Okay.
Don't drop the lamp.
Ted would like to smoke.
What we do.
I, look.
I know.
In the place where I sleep, I don't get phone calls. We're talking to this gentleman over here.
I, I.
The thing that'd be interesting the most is, I get the feeling, so Ted, you retired and then you just swore off technology?
No.
No, I, like, but you were a computer programmer or something, right? So then you just.
I was more an programmer.
Right, so it's just amazing that you're just like, I'm disconnecting.
Well, it just happened that I retired and go to a place, I live like, oh.
Where it doesn't, it's a plan of the law. No, I'm saying.
I'm not the only one up there that.
No, I know. The color types are still working though, right? The teletypes are still working. No. All right, we got nothing for policies tonight. Um, you ready Superintendent? We got some action items.
Yeah.
You're on.
Move to approve the Southwick, Talling, Granville Regional School District Strategic Plan twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three revised for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year recommended.
Any questions or concerns on our very detailed strategic plan that we went over on our retreat? Yes. Rachel, do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the agreement between the Southwick, Talling, Granville Regional School Committee and Jennifer Yellen for the period October one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two recommended. So moved.
Any questions on the five oh four coordinator? This obviously worked out. Yeah, I'm assuming since, since the person has signed the contract, I'm assuming that worked out well.
Yeah.
Jenny, that's why you come in.
Yeah, she starts um, on the first.
Awesome, very nice. That's great. Okay, um, we'll take a roll call vote to accept this so this young lady can get to work. Uh, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes six zero zero.
Uh, move to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick, Talling, Granville Regional School District and the Cafeteria Workers Association, which addresses terms, conditions and understandings for Article twenty-five sick leave, Article eleven hours of work and Article thirteen paid procedures and data recommended. So moved.
Questions on this M L A? We'll take a roll call vote to accept this. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes six zero zero.
Uh, move to accept the settlement agreement by and between the Southwick, Talling, Granville Regional School Committee and the Southwick, Talling, Granville Clerical Unit for the period July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four recommended. So moved.
Questions on this agreement? Take a roll call vote to accept this. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes six zero zero.
Uh, move to approve the Southwick Regional School Girls Volleyball Gold Athletics Topcorn Fundraiser for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Proceeds to be used to offset costs of warm-up apparel and also to benefit Keds Foundation. Recommended. So moved.
Any questions? Take a roll call vote to accept this. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the Southwick Regional School Yearbook and Yearbook Advertising Sales Proceeds to be Used for Yearbook Publication Costs Recommended. So moved.
Roll call vote to accept this. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the Southwick Regional School Class of twenty twenty-two T-shirt sales for the benefit of offsetting the costs of senior activities. Recommended. So moved.
You mean us to vote yes on this?
Yeah.
It looks good. It's a picture on the backside.
I know.
Oh, really?
I have it in color. It looks good.
Does all the seniors on there?
Yeah, it's all the names. They were deciding between signatures or just print.
I love this.
We did a poll and we were just like, we just wanted as quick as we can. We'll just do that. It's gonna be easier.
Signature is ten years from now, you won't know who the heck the signature is.
Right, exactly.
You don't know person by.
Yeah, we, we had a talk about this in our AP classroom this past, the other day. We were one of the last grades to set up Woodland and do purses.
Well, that.
My, my fourth creator learned it.
Oh, you guys, they still do that?
Yeah, we heard it last year in third grade.
And that you need to, you need to.
I had him practicing it all the summer.
I don't know whether that cut to Zoe's classroom, but you may wanna check that because.
She's in our class.
Yeah, do a little test tomorrow. All right, so let's uh, do a motion or we did the motion. Let's vote on this so that the next consumer T-shirt. Uh, Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Rob's a yes. Motion passes six zero zero. All right, Superintendent Willard, you're up.
Okay, so at the last uh, school meeting, Chairman Stevenson, you asked me to get some numbers for you on the amount of students and staff we had at each school. Um, so at Southwick Regional School, um, at the date, I got, received the email, we had six hundred seventy-two students and a hundred and six staff, which gave us seven hundred seventy-eight total in the school. Eighty percent of that would be six hundred and twenty-three. Uh, Powdermill School, three hundred ninety-one students, fifty-five staff, uh, four hundred forty-six total. And at Woodland School, we have three hundred eight students, seventy-four staff with a three hundred eighty-two total. Uh, Marsha, Marsha did share with you, um, we use the M I I S, which is the Massachusetts Immunization Information System to get more current data um, besides just what the state is offering because it's specific to the kids in our school. And it wasn't up and running last time, so I, I used to state data, but right now we have forty-six point six nine percent of our students vaccinated. So she said it was three eighteen, I did the math on the calculator, it came out to be three, about three sixty. So I would say three hundred eighteen kids, students that we have vaccinated. I don't know the percentage of staff who are vaccinated, but even if we did get a hundred percent of our staff vaccinated, we are still about two hundred people short of reaching that eighty percent mark.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so we have a long way to go. The other thing I wanted to report, um, we, we don't have an MOA this year. Um, but if you remember last year, if we reached that twenty-five metrics, um, the schools would close. So I, I, I still do chart and I make a lot of decisions based on the trends that are happening right now in our district. Believe it or not, Ted, Tallinn has one positive case of COVID right now. That between the weeks of eight twenty-nine to nine and eleven. Granville has seven and Southwick has twenty-six. So we're still hovering right around that metric of, we, we really still need to be conscious that community, uh, COVID is in our community. We need to be conscious of making sure that we're following the best in safety mitigation strategies that we know are out there. Um, because we still have it in our system and right now, the numbers in our school, knock on wood, have been very low compared to surrounding communities. Um, I know a lot of superintendents who I've spoken to who are inundated with close contacts and um, everything else. We are not. Um, I think we've had five cases so far this school year. Uh, two the first week, two last week, and we had one that was reported so far for this week. Um, so we're doing well, um, but um, thanks to our administrators and our teachers and the parents. Kids are coming in, they're wearing their masks properly, um, they have sand sanitizer out. Kids are doing what they need to be doing and that keeps everything open and everything working for all of us. So um, I applaud all of our stakeholders and everybody for doing what we need to do because we're, we're, as you said, we're up and we're running right now and we're.
It's exciting now.
It is exciting.
So out of the, so when, when somebody's active, like those five cases that we got the first week, how long do they stay active? Two weeks?
On us?
Well, I, I guess.
I, I don't, it's, that's different data than what I'm reporting. Marsha's not here.
We might have somebody that can help us on that. You know what I mean? Like, they only last so long and then they're considered not active, right?
So my data that I recorded out is from the weeks period eight twenty-nine through nine eleven.
Right.
So this is state data right here. Those students may be in this number once they get reported, but it would be on their test date and then they stay in for the week, for two weeks in which they're being counted because it's a two-week total.
So out of the numbers, and we don't know where those, these were, but I mean, we are doing very well so far.
We are. We are.
And it, and it looks like the emails we're getting, or at least the ones that I've seen, we're getting more of our positives are in Woodland, correct?
Yeah, believe it or not, yes. We just had our first positive at the regional school. Um, but they've all been at Woodland so far. It's like the one that we received this week.
Yeah, Woodland last year.
They've not, like, they have, we was looking at the data the other day. We said how it's all flipped.
Well, they, they say that this Delta variant is much more putting these younger kids much more susceptible. All right, Mr. Presnell, do you have anything for us tonight?
No reports this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing? No foundation definitions or anything? Holy smokes, all right.
We don't wanna bore the crowd.
No, no, no. All right, so subcommittees and liaisons, um, negotiations. Did we have a meeting? Or we've got one soon, right? We keep talking about one that's coming up.
Over thirteen?
Yeah. Awesome. Okay, so finance, we had our very first meeting slash indoctrination slash instructional meeting that was very informative, so we'll, we'll have that meeting monthly. Let's see, L P V E C. Pam?
Yes, I had a meeting last week. I left all my notes at home, so I'll fill you guys in at the next meeting when I actually have my notes in.
All right, the governors, I have not had a meeting yet, but we've communicated with people in charge, so I'm sure they'll let me come with that next one in. Policy. We just had our first meeting today. We went over the public comment policy, which we've made some small little changes to that we're gonna send the legal to take a look at, so we should have that, I would assume, for everybody to look at a first reading here next meeting. We talked about concussion protocol, which we looked at, but we need to have some questions from the athletic director that he'll come in at our next meeting to sort of clarify a couple of things there. And we took our first look at the homeschool policy with respect to extracurriculars. We had a number of questions and concerns that came up along that policy that we're going to be looking at getting some extra information to try to make that a little clearer. And then once we kind of figure that out, we'll bring that up to everybody so they can take a look at that. It's certainly a little bit of a challenging topic. Pam, we want to make sure we better duck in the room before we bring that back up. Fair assessment. Pam, draw a vote. Okay, buildings and grounds. Mr. Locke, did you get your meeting set up yet?
Yeah, I got it.
Is it a secret date? All right, I don't know whether we got like secret handshake type of meeting type of setup. All right, let's, also athletics, I O T.
We need support.
I can't attend that meeting, so I will.
My health advisor also went to first. Now that we start till November.
Anything else? For spread technology. Oh, Pat, legislative, did you say you were looking into being able to go to that one?
The cutout date was August thirteenth. Oh, boy, can I go.
Darn it. Guess that's a no. They won't accept.
Is that for voting purposes?
No, it's for in-person attendance.
I can't just vote on all policies.
You can. But yeah, registered.
Interesting. They have waiting, but.
I tried to click on it. It wouldn't.
It was not, yeah.
Wow.
That's new. Okay.
Do you have any experience with it?
I want to know. I do.
I already clicked the time off, so let me go.
It's actually a really good conference.
I actually looked it up on YouTube and I watched some of them and I really think it would be.
I do too, Pat. I really do. I would welcome for you to be able to go. It's not something I can attend.
I think you should just get on. Can't you just crash it? You're going, right?
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe that can be your security.
I know, right?
There you go.
Code in security, Pat. That's.
Probably will, probably will. We'll catch you soon.
All right, public comments. We're at our second public comment. Did you want to address us before that? Because during the section, which we're gonna come up to right after this? Yeah, I mean, if you just want to give a presentation, I know we're looking for a committee representative to be on the, but if you want to get a little bit more information, that'd be great. Sure, absolutely.
So I'll just give you a quick nutshell of it. We have funding for the master plan, at least the beginning of the funding for the master plan for the next, for this year. Twenty-five thousand for a master plan and twenty-five thousand for a housing portion of it. So we're getting together a committee, master plan committee, that's gonna be, well, still to make the final vote, but it's, I think it's gonna be about fifteen people on it, or fifteen people on it, kind of which are coming from committees, to planning board, the select board member, EPW. Agriculture and Conservation has one, Parks and Rec, Finance, Economic Development, Lakes and School, I believe. Then there's gonna be a business owner and four residents. We're gonna be discussing tonight the residents and the business owner. I think most committees, there may be one, Finance hasn't met yet. I'm not sure. I've heard E D C met the other day. I have gotten a representative. So what we're asking the committees, and I think it sounds like it's gonna be, we were sort of debating between whether it was gonna be someone from the school department or someone from the school committee who would be on the actual master plan advisory committee, which is sort of a holding committee to recommend something to the planning board or. There's also gonna be consultants involved. So there's gonna be times where we'd say, you know, let's go talk to the police department or the fire department or whoever else and have them involved in this portion of the master plan. But it sounds like from emails I've seen more around that school committee is gonna be the, have a representative on the master plan committee. So the school department, that will contact, figure that out when we need some involvement from the school department. So what we're asking of each of the boards and committees who are on there is to take a vote and have a discussion about it, take a vote. It's a, I mean, it's a two-year process. So, you know, we're gonna appoint people for two-year terms. I don't believe for a second that the same people who started are gonna be there at the end, but we're gonna, you know, give it a shot. So, you know, we'd like people who are committed to it. It's gonna be probably a little heavier schedule in the beginning, a little heavier schedule in the end, right? Because it's gonna be the learning curve in the beginning of understanding the master plan process and goals and all that stuff. And then you're probably doing monthly meetings for a while. And then, you know, at the end, trying to get a final recommendation out. So you're gonna need your meeting schedule. But, you know, that's my, that's my, yes, I guess, could be the word. It's gonna be up to the committee however to set their schedule and do what they need to do. I'll be on their ex officio, but for the most part, it's gonna be, you know, the committees to do what they need to do. We're trying to make it as independent as possible and let them come up with this. Sort of only real preferences, I guess, or recommendations that we have or, you know, because there are ten spots for people on boards and committees, we'd like them to have some experience with that or maybe even be able really to speak to that committee. So that would be a preference. After all the boards and committees. And, you know, that's with, there's a, I think, three different categories. Economic development, the business owner and school, where we haven't had a formal discussion, but realistically, I don't think it has to be a Southwick resident because there are different, you know, stakeholders in those, in those areas. For example, a business owner who's gonna be, the only business owner application I think we have doesn't live in town, but he has, you know, a substantial amount of knowledge about town and has a business in town and I think that that's useful. Town development, you know, I think chapter members don't live in town. But again, they're providing that sort of business input in the school. And it suits the regional schools, so they have committees that have our different towns. So, you know, I think we're willing to take someone from other towns, right? Just not to say that that's what we want, but, you know, I think everybody should be up for consideration if you want to be on the, on the committee. Other than that, you know, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You scheduled your meeting, that was regard to like day of the week timeframe in which the meetings would take place, you know, things like that.
I would, again, be probably the committee who sort of sets that schedule. Once they, you know, the plan right now would be, I expect by the end of the month, we'll have everybody set on the committee. We have to get sworn in. On October, I think whatever that Tuesday is, there's gonna be a representative from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission coming to the planning board meeting and sort of giving a brief little spiel about the master plan process, just to sort of, you know, educate people as to what the process is and we invite everybody who's on that committee, obviously, and others to come to that meeting.
That's on the fifth?
On the fifth, yep, seven o'clock.
That's our.
I could be wrong.
The fifth to Tuesday.
Okay, so whatever, we meet every Tuesday, seven o'clock, so.
Okay, well, that, well, you may have an issue because we have our meetings at five thirty and most times are done before seven, but.
So this is just for, this wouldn't be the sort of master plan advisory committee, the meeting on Tuesday. This is just for the planning board.
Oh, okay.
We just are having someone come in to sort of give up, you know, everybody, the planning board.
I got you. So we've got our meeting tonight. We've got a meeting on the fifth. So if we were able to have a discussion tonight and then vote for a representative on the fifth, that would work, that would work within your timeframe?
You could, though I would, you may, the person who's gonna be on it may want to be there on the fifth, right? So it may be better to vote, or at least have a candidate or two today who could show up on the fifth. And I'm happy to schedule the presentation a little bit later in the meeting to make sure that you, you know, folks are able to attend it.
Okay, so if we have, so if you delay that and we were to, if we have a couple of people that are interested tonight and we were to vote at that meeting, anybody that were going to be on that position would need to be expected to be able to go to that meeting after ours?
Yeah, I mean, they don't have to, but I think it would be very.
No, but I mean, we could, I mean, if you had it delayed, I mean, that could theoretically work.
And we also do all our meetings by Zoom as well, as well as in person. So anybody could sign in and watch it as well and interact with it, so. Yeah. So, yeah, that would be, and again, I can't really tell you the dates or how often only because we leave it up to that advisor to set their, to set their schedule. Any other questions?
Thanks for saving the time to be here.
No problem. Thank you. So just email, you know, myself or John Goddard, if you guys have your decision, but again, I'll go with it. It's gonna be that presentation and I'll email around the timing of it. I, you know, when we hear about it. I'll try to put it later.
All right, sounds good.
The one last thing, and it's not so much for the school committee voting, but just, you know, one of the thoughts that we were having is having two student representatives being on there, not in an ongoing manner, but I think it's, you know.
It sounds like a good situation, right?
It is, it is.
I'm not ready for the planning board meeting.
So I would sort of.
I have a moderator.
Could you send me an email on that, like, for the high school?
Correct. So, you know, that would be, I'm thinking helpful.
Seriously.
You can do it.
Okay.
Maybe some door AP. I'm going to wait for it as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so that, so that takes us to old business, which I think we haven't. To new business, this was our first item up there with the master plan committee. I guess this was last minute for us to get this on here. Is anyone, I guess we'll start this way. Is anyone interested in going on to that committee?
You're gonna have a problem. Because depending on what's, you've got two other towns. That's gotta be, you know, there's gonna be feedback. It's gonna have to go back to the two towns.
What do you mean? I'm confused.
The master plan.
Yeah, it's for the town subset. Is that, I mean.
It's the sound, yeah. However, the impact could affect whatever decisions are made because it's at the other two towns.
The committee member that is responsible, that is, that sits on that board would be responsible for providing updates to this board just like we do with all the other subcommittees.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
And he said that, you know, he would, the committee didn't feel they were limited to Southwick residents, so if it's something that you're interested in, then it would.
I don't think that necessarily is.
I'm not.
I realize I raised it. I was very hesitant.
Look at this.
I've been there, done that, and I'll do it again, but I mean.
No, no, I guess, have you, have you gone through one of these before? I, I haven't.
I haven't either. I mean.
That's the last time I did it.
I'm aware of what it is.
Somewhere with that. I mean, out of everyone here, if I have him.
But it's, but you're, I guess, and from my understanding, this is a organization, they're gonna get together to try to figure out the direction that the town wants to go, correct? Okay, so that may or may not involve the other.
It could.
District. No, I don't disagree with you, but it might not. It depends on what the direction they're going.
I'm just getting, after going through building project and everything else, you know, I know, you know, where these things can the pentacles can go out and, and what's, what you gotta be very careful in this area
Yeah.
is that it doesn't, all you need is for the other two towns to say, oh, Southwick's going that way and we don't, we don't want to go that. You understand? In other words, it's, it's gonna have to be sort of sold because you're gonna sell, you gotta sell it to Southwick, but you're also gonna have, I don't know what's, what's gonna come out of it.
I don't know whether we're gonna have.
I'm just looking at worst case. You know, where you could end up with a mess at the very end.
I think for the most part, this is gonna be nothing more than information mostly to relay back. I don't think this person's gonna carry a tremendous amount of power.
You know, if we can get that information back quickly.
Right.
And anything that looks like it's gonna affect the other two towns. Now we can be act.
Well, I have a feeling they're not, this is gonna be pretty much open to the public as they go through this, like any other committee.
I'm not, I'm just pointing out that there's a pitfall here that you gotta watch out for.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know whether the town of Southwick doesn't necessarily gauge their decisions on, on, on.
No, no, I don't want, I I would say ninety percent of what's gonna be discussed in that is all Southwick.
Right.
Probably ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna, they're gonna have conversations about how, how this doesn't necessarily affect Granville or Powell. Okay. It only takes one of them, not, it only takes those two towns and one to pass the school. Right, I mean, it, it, so, yeah, there's. The, well, what, what my thoughts on this was is, since we do have another meeting before this is coming out, it might be, like, if somebody, if somebody is interested. Think about it, we've got another meeting in two weeks. We've got a meeting on the fifth. If you're interested in being part of that committee, we'll bring it up under a, would it need to be an action item maybe? Because it looks like we're looking for, we have to have a vote on.
Probably, we would vote, like, because we vote a delegate to different things, so we would.
No, I'm just trying to figure out, like, what section does it go under?
I would say an action item. Yeah.
So maybe what we'll do is when we get to that point, we can have a, a quick little who, who's interested and then we can do what we're gonna, who we nominate onto the board. That probably makes the most sense. I don't know whether we need to necessarily rush through that to get that done, but I do, if you're, if you're.
Unless, unless, unless there's consensus that nobody.
Yeah, is there anybody, I guess.
I think that might be our problem.
Is there anybody that wants to do it?
I will bow out of that.
Is there, is there any that, anybody that wants to do it?
I kind of do. It's kind of one, something that piques my interest.
Okay.
I don't want to say no.
Okay, so.
And I don't want to say yes.
So here's, so you're a firm maybe.
I'm a very firm maybe.
Okay, so let's do this. Is there anybody else that's, that's overly jure about being on the?
Have to figure out all the hats I wear.
Okay. So we'll, so then why don't we do this? We'll, we'll give a, a two-week break or whatever you've got. We'll bring this up as a point of discussion at our next meeting and then we will vote somebody on that board.
I think I'm going to attend a meeting at seven to see.
Oh, tonight?
If I can find that.
Very good. All right, well.
I think you want the job.
I think we can get you out of town, Pat, to be able to do that. Consensus. Oh. So, all right, next point. Amy and I are having a discussion whether this is to do it now or later, but we're, we're gonna do it now. When I was going through our regional agreements between Granville, Collin and Southwick, when they created this back in two thousand and eleven, there is a clause in there that says that every ten years with the census that they, that we are expected to look at the updated census and to figure out the weighted votes for the committee. So right now, it's set up where every Southwick member has sixteen point four votes. So right now, it's set up where every Southwick member has sixteen point four votes, uh Granville has fourteen, Tallinn has four. Um I went through and since the census is published, I went and print, and in your package is the actual information from the US Census. Um and the interesting thing is, is that the breakdown keeps the voting weights the exact same.
That's great.
There was, there was a drop, there was actually an increase in Tallinn's census.
Two people moved there.
There, no, it actually went up, it went up, I I mean the percentage went up, it didn't change your votes anymore. No, I know, Granville's went down and Southwick's went down.
I'd like to point out that Granville is leading in the percentage under age five, though, which is pretty darn impressive. There is some hope for us yet.
If you actually, and this is just the first page. There's, there's a ton of info. If you actually go, I was on there for over an hour.
I disagree or higher.
So who selected Italian ancestry as one of the things that's popular?
I don't know.
That was a great point.
It was interesting cuz when I, when I, when I did move to town somewhere, it indicated that the second highest nationality in Southwick were actually Canadians. Um so there's a number of French Canadians.
We're Scottish.
I, I, that's, I'm Scottish and French, so it worked out well. So um I don't think we need to take a vote on this, but it does say that we just need to update the record. So Amy, somewhere in the archives are putting forward that we're gonna need to, whoever's in this room in ten years is gonna need to update this again in twenty, twenty thirty.
It'll be ten.
Alright, any other questions on that? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move.
Alright, we'll do a roll call vote to adjourn the meeting. Uh Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes six zero zero. Everybody have a great evening.